Good evening, everybody. I'm looking for a motion on the floor to accept the minutes of February 28th, 2019. Richard seconded by Jen Poirier. All those in favor? All those opposed? Are there any extensions? Seeing none, they are so important. I'm going to sway a little bit from the agenda tonight only because we have a new board member and I think it appropriate that we go around the room and introduce ourselves to her and she introduce herself to us. So, I'm going to start. My name is Dixie Green. I'm the president of Canaan. I am the board chair.
Mariella Charles from Mercer. We met.
Mike Bedad from Scotty Hegan.
She didn't introduce herself.
Oh, sorry.
I'm Kathy Elder from Norwood. Hi Kathy.
Lisa Bedad from Scotty Hegan.
Jeanne Franklin from Canaan.
Welcome Kathy, Jeff Poirier, Scotty Hegan. For those who are more than Teresa Howard from Cornville.
Welcome Karen Ellis, Scotty Hegan.
Karen Speth from Scotty Hegan.
Welcome Mike Smith from Scotty Hegan.
Hi, I'm Gina Conley from Scotty.
Brandy Morgan from Norwood.
Desiree Levine, Norwood.
Delia Fleming, Norwood.
Peter Gilbert, Scotty Hegan.
Gar French from Smithfield.
Peggy Lovejoy, Scotty Hegan, welcome.
Welcome Sarah Bunker from Mercer.
Welcome Amy Rouse from Scotty Hegan.
Linda Quinn from Scotty Hegan.
Pearl Bigelow, Alhiggin.
Iain Garcia from Corin.
Welcome Kristy Johnson, Smithfield.
David Levitt, Sports Services Manager.
Tracy Foster, Superintendent Roffin.
John Booty, Assistant Superintendent.
Mike Pusher. He's at school board attorney. I'm Brett Colby, I'm the Superintendent of Schools and welcome to the largest school board in the state of Maine.
Thank you.
Now, I have a brief statement to read so that everybody knows what's going on tonight and how we're going to proceed. Welcome to our school board meeting where the board will discuss potential action on the Native American mascot imagery issue. The meeting tonight is made up of three parts. The first will be a brief executive session to meet with the school board's attorney. The board will move to another room for the meeting and return here after for the short meeting. We're estimating it'll take about 10 minutes. The second part of the meeting will be a board workshop session in which individual board members will have the opportunity to share any thoughts they have on the topic. It is not a debate but a sharing of information. Members will not be allowed to cede or give their allotted time to another member. No motion or voting will take place in the workshop session. Board members will each have three minutes to speak. No public participation will be allowed. Once the workshop session is done, we will return to regular session where the board will determine what actions we will take next. If it is determined that motions will be entertained, then any motions will be recognized when they are made as a result of a call for motions from the chair. No public participation will be allowed. Any person who fails to comply will be asked to leave. To ensure orderly and fair process, the board has established the following guidelines for members. Only one board member will speak at a time. Board members will keep their comments to no more than three minutes. Board members may only speak once. There will be no debating. Speakers will follow the rules of decorum and be respectful of others. A board member may ask a clarifying procedural question of the chair if needed. The meeting will adjourn following the completion of any determination made by the board. So, at this time, I'm going to declare us executives. I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session by Teresa, seconded by Jeanne Franklin. All those in favor? All those opposed? Are there any extensions? Seeing none, we are in executive session. Do right that, folks.
No, no. He wants things to happen right away without actually kind of working towards something.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that. You know, maybe he's just one of those people who's just got to hit bottom somehow.
Yeah, I still, you.
Looks like they're back.
Oh, good.
We're just waiting on a couple of members who stopped at the restroom on the way back. We'll proceed.
They're across the hall.
You gotta go, go.
Straight across the hall.
I'm an advocate for you, gotta go.
They're available straight across the hall.
Okay. Okay, now that everybody's back, we're going to go right into our workshop and see what happens. I did prepare something, but I've decided not to use it because when you get here and you see the crowd and you think, hm, I got better things to say. I've been on this board for nine years. When I came on this board, a lady by the name of Kathy Libby was the board chair. One of the things I learned from her is that when you vote on this board, you vote for these kids, you have to vote for all the kids, not just a few. You have to vote with all of their intent. All of them to have the right to come to school, feel safe, not be bullied. And I know there are so many issues that cause bullying other than this one. I just, I want to be clear that I know that it's not just the mascot issue. But tonight, we're here to hear what the board has to say. And many of you have already heard what I have to say because if you've asked me, I've told you. So, I'm not going to go into detail about that. But I do want to say that in 2015, I never felt like I was being bullied for my vote. I know that there were board members that did, but I did not. In 2019, I feel very pressured and very bullied. From fake emails to fake anonymous emails to fake Facebook pages, all of it. We're adults and we're all trying to get to the right point for all of our kids. We're not, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be going at each other. We should be sitting down and trying to work it out. That's my goal for here tonight, for us to work it out and do what, do the right thing. Whatever this board decides is the right thing, is the right thing. So, I guess that's the end of my time.
My name's Mariella and I.
I'm going to ask you to abstain from clapping.
Just want to say that like Dixie, I've been on this board for nine years and there is a lot of pressure right now for things to change and I do support that change. I think what's best for our kids is the change to do away with the mascot or name or whatever we want to call it and move forward and have our schools safe and not bullying and I really am very passionate that this change needs to happen. Hopefully, tonight, we can see these changes and move forward from here.
My name is Kathy Elder. I'm from Norwood and I believe that we should change the mascot. Today's kids deserve to have a mascot that's free from controversy and they deserve to have a mascot that isn't based on the race of the people. I think the best thing to do for this community is to move on so everybody can heal and we can focus on what's best for the kids in the school district and that involves changing the mascot. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mike Bedad. I've been on the board for five years and most everybody here, I've joined the board for the kids and the education plus the budgets of the district. Just appalled of the anger that this issue has created in our communities and also the tension that this has created amongst the board members. I've lived here in Scotty Hegan all my life and I feel Scotty Hegan is my reservation. So, that's all I've got to say.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Franklin from Canaan. I've been on the board 15 years and I got on the board because I was always a PTF president or a sport booster mom and I wanted to continue the education and the benefits that my children got. So, I decided to get on the board for that reason. I've always had kids first. I've always believed we should put kids first, give them the best education they can have for the money that we can have and keep our taxes reasonable. But I do favor to leave the mask, leave the name the way it is. I believe we took a vote in 2015. I know there could be a change, but that was a vote. We were told it was going to be respected, whatever decision we made and we made the decision to leave it to the Scotty Hegan Indians and I think we should leave it that way. I 110 percent believe, wholeheartedly, leave it alone. Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Poirier, represent Scotty Hegan. I joined the board nine years ago and I joined the board because I have seven sons, five of which actually went through and graduated from Scotty Hegan schools. I wanted to serve on the board because I care about kids' education. Of course, my kids were in school at that time as well and I wanted to be a voice for the students, the staff, and also my community. Over the past several months, years in fact actually, I've listened to countless people about this topic. I've read every email and every message that was sent regardless what town, what state, or what the content of the message was. I've actually spoken with students, with staff, with the community and I've had the opportunity to actually talk to 78 tribal members just in the past two months. They've actually reached out to me to let me know how they feel about this because it has been brought to their attention. What I've found from speaking with them is that they're not offended by our Scotty Hegan Indian name or the seal that's on the gymnasium wall and the fact is they've never been asked how they feel. That spoke loudly. The overwhelming majority of students, staff, and the community have also told me that they wish to remain the Scotty Hegan Indians. Our school's seal was created by high school students back in 1926. It was seven years after the town seal was adopted. The creation centered around the town of Scotty Hegan and its history. There was a toss-up between two designs and the students ended up collaborating on a seal that's still used today. I received an email today that stood out to me. It was from Christine Keller and she's given me permission to read a little bit of that to you because this is something that I've been hearing from so many in the community and it's important to hear. She states, "I cannot emphasize enough the weight of our heritage and the honor and respect this name embodies. World-renowned Bernard Langley iconic 1969 Indian sculpture was and still is dedicated to the Maine Indians, the first people to use these lands in peaceful ways. Indigenous people and groups from many demographics have expressed both support for and against the name retention. Overwhelmingly, MSAD 54 indigenous members and descendants have expressed their support for keeping the name. Theirs is the indigenous voice we should give credence to. The obligation is to the MSAD 54 demographic and their perspective on the matter. The name honors the local indigenous heritage and history. Scotty Hegan and Norwood are indigenous names. To remove the reference would be the real travesty and disrespect. Erasing and avoiding acknowledgement is far more disparaging than being manipulated and influenced by those that refuse to recognize the merit and honor of keeping the name." So, I thank Christine for letting me read that. "The history and heritage in this town runs deep and it's all connected. The majority of people feel this way and we've already heard from the state that preliminary numbers show that our Native American students actually outperform others. And the toxic bullying that's happened through this whole process has just been inexcusable. We need to set the example for our kids that we won't be bullied and that we're going to listen to them and it would be all of myself, I would support keeping this Scotty Hegan Indian name."
My name is Teresa Howard. I'm one of the representatives from Cornville. I've been on the board for about eight years. I joined the board as my children were entering the school district and the reason for that was of course to support what they needed, education. Make sure that if there was something to be done to improve their education that I could be part of that. I believe as school board members that we're leaders. I've served in many different leadership roles. I think the most important leadership role that I can ever be in is a parent to my children and my leadership style is to lead by example. So, I try to teach my children to be kind and respectful of others, to make sure that they take into account what their actions do to impact other people. That's why I feel like it's time for us to, as Kathy said, to provide our children with a controversial, free mascot, something that they can be proud of. I realize and I know that when I first got the very first letter as a new board member that said that there was requests for the Indian mascot to be removed, I was sad and I was disappointed. I graduated from this high school as a Scotty Hegan Indian and it did disappoint me. I think that we can do better for our kids and we can provide them with the opportunity to be part of choosing where we go from here and to truly be proud without worrying about how somebody else is going to judge their pride. So, I feel like changing, it's time for change. Thank you.
Everybody's pretty fast here. I don't know if I'm going to be that quick. I'm Derek Ellis. I'm from Scotty Hegan. And I've got a statement here that I've prepared, so I'm going to read it. You guys are pretty brave to do it, do it on the fly. I'm pretty sure you as a school board know where I stand on this issue. A lot of negative things have been said lately by me and about me personally, about different members of the board and about Scotty Hegan as a community. I can live with the personal attacks. I brought them on myself, but the comments about our community aren't really okay. Someone sent me a meme recently that said, "This is how white people feel." This is how white people feel when they help or agree with another culture or minority. It was a picture of a white person being held up by a group of people of every color with a light beaming on them like they were some kind of god. This is not how I feel. I feel quite the opposite. But this isn't about me and this isn't about you. I'm not here to debate, argue facts, or attempt to persuade you all to have some moral epiphany. We've been presented with a ton of peer-reviewed articles, papers, et cetera. One email had over 100 in it alone. I stand here as an individual with individual thoughts and feelings. I do not however stand alone. I attended Norwood Central Grade School, which is now Milkstream Elementary, the old junior high on the hill, and graduated high school in this very building. My daughter's a fourth grader at Margaret Chase. I lived in Norwood for the first 34 years of my life and Scotty Hegan for the last 13. I'm not an outsider. This isn't fun for me. I find no amusement or satisfaction in having this discussion. It doesn't make me feel good to have all these people come here and bear witness to this. But this isn't about me and it's not about you. This is about the sovereign, living, breathing people that live among us, finally getting an equal place at the table. We're a proud town, full of proud people. We're proud of our children, our student athletes. We're proud of our values and integrity, proud of who we are, and that's as it should be. Pride lives with each and every one of us. That can't be lost or taken away. We always get to keep it, always. But one by one, one battle at a time, Native American names, imagery, and mascots have been removed from schools and sports teams across the country. Scotty Hegan isn't unique to this. We're not being singled out. All that remains of those battles are the same community values, the same memories, and the same pride, only the names are different. The idea that we're the last district in the state to retire our Native American name and imagery looms large. The current governor, the ACLU of Maine, the Maine Human Rights Coalition, the Maine NAACP, the Department of Education, various others, and the sovereign tribes of Maine have spoken. The requests and resolutions are aimed at us, at Scotty Hegan, and Scotty Hegan alone. I don't like living this way. This isn't fun for me.
So, my name is Karen Smith. I'm from Scotty Hegan. I just have a couple of things to say. This is how I feel. Being offended by something or someone is a personal belief. There is no right or wrong. The people I have personally talked with about the school's name are not offended by it. These are people in my community that live in this district, the people that I represent here on the school board. If by having the word Indian as a source of bullying, bullying in our schools or town, which is what we've been told, then why are we being bullied to change? My granddaughter wears glasses and she was bullied when she first started wearing them. I once did tell her to stop wearing them. That's not what we should be teaching our children. I have learned a lot about myself these past few months, but some things I already knew. I'm not a racist despite the many times I've been called that by people who have never met me, people I've had no interaction with. I can tell you all with certainty that we are not racist, although that's what we have been called just because we have a different opinion.
You want to read the rest of this? Hello, my name is Todd Smith. I am a supporter of keeping the Indian name. I believe each issue that comes before the board is handled individually, but I've also prepared a statement that I will read. I keep hearing people say, "I should be heard because I'm a taxpayer." This is not a taxpayer issue as not all taxpayers get to vote, residents vote. If you don't live in this district, your voice isn't counted. I have no problem with residents requesting a change when they respectfully defend the side they represent. In my experience, the civility has been missing. We know there are differences of opinion and that is acceptable. However, there is no room for bullying or hate. We are reminded regularly to follow the facts. Here's a fact that is ignored. We are not the last high school in Maine to use Native American names and imagery. In fact, we aren't even the last school in Somerset County, but for some reason, Scotty Hegan has been targeted by outsiders with special interest. Scotty Hegan is a town, will always be the Scotty Hegan Indians. There's simply too much heritage, too much imagery, too many reminders here. Our town's seal is an Indian, but the most obvious image is the world's tallest wooden Indian watching over our downtown. This is a reminder of the Indians from Scotty Hegan that once inhabited our town. Removing the school name won't change this as our children are still exposed to these images every day. We've heard from so many people through many hundreds of emails and of course at our school meetings and our forums. In fact, we've heard from some of the same people multiple times. With so many people being from away, I think it's time we hear from the people we represent, the locals, the parents of the students in our district. Each year, we ask those parents and residents to vote on a budget that we use to run our district and we will ask that again in just a few weeks. I propose we follow through with our goal of an understanding of how our residents feel and ask them on our next annual budget ballot. Let's find out how they feel about the outsider's issue with a Scotty Hegan Indian. We trust them each year to approve a budget that we've worked so diligently on. We would be remiss if we didn't ask their opinion on the issue of this gravity, an issue that has targeted our home and citizens as a group of hate-filled racists, which we are not. Sure, this may not be a binding vote, but it would be true representation of our constituents. These are the same constituents that put each and every one of us in these seats and we think they made the right choice then. We've come this far in asking for inputs and why not ask one more time? Again, I know the results wouldn't be final and ultimately would be a board decision to make, but we obviously don't know how to proceed as we keep coming back and asking for more testimony. Let's let the voters decide, including the full-blooded Pasimaquoddy folks living here in Scotty Hegan. This would be a clear way of knowing how our residents feel so we can put an end to this and teach our children what true democracy is. Let's allow our residents to speak on election day.
Can I stand and speak louder because I come from a loud family? We do. I was asked to join this board by two wonderful ladies. I have worked with children and families all my adult life. This is why I joined the board, to work for kids, families, and teachers. This is my main goal. I was lucky to be born and raised in this town. Two wonderful parents who came from Orno, best kindergarten teacher in Saffron Door in the day, and Bangor. I had a great public education that I truly appreciate. I loved to explore what was out there. I was so fortunate to experience the greatest job for 23 years, working with a diverse group of refugees that poured into Portland, Vietnamese, Somalis, Sudanese, Eastern Europeans, Kenyans, Iranians, and Hispanics. The list goes on. These families welcomed us into their homes as we visited before the child started their head start year. They talked through their interpreters and some spoke English. They were so proud of their heritage, very proud people, who thought they were so lucky to land in this place. I believe my ancestors from Ireland felt the same way. but we obviously don't know how to proceed, as we keep coming back and asking for more testimony. Let's let the voters decide, including the full-blooded Pasimaquoddy folks living here in Scotty Hegan. This would be a clear way of knowing how our residents feel, so we can put an end to this and teach our children what true democracy is. Let's allow our residents to speak on election day.
Can I stand and speak loudly, because I come from a loud family? We do. I was asked to join this board by two wonderful ladies. I have worked with children and families all my adult life. This is why I joined the board, to work for kids, families, and teachers. This is my main goal. I was lucky to be born and raised in this town, two wonderful parents who came from Orno, best kindergarten teacher in Safford, in the day, and Bangor. I had a great public education that I truly appreciate. I loved to explore what was out there. I was so fortunate to experience the greatest job for twenty-three years, working with a diverse group of refugees that poured into Portland, Vietnamese, Somalis, Sudanese, Eastern Europeans, Kenyans, Iranians, and Hispanics. The list goes on. These families welcomed us into their homes as we visited before the child started their head start year. They talked through their interpreters, and some spoke English. They were so proud of their heritage, very proud people, who thought they were so lucky to land in this place. I believe my ancestors from Ireland felt the same way. That is my heritage. I so respect the natives, and everyone else should too. One more thing, there are four kids in my family who all went to school here. One who played football thinks it should stay. The other three of us, well, yes. And I thank you all for listening.
As we are hopefully drawing to a close on this topic of the Indian mascot nickname, I can't help but reflect on this experience. I'm speaking not only to the board, but to the guests in the audience. We have seen incredible amounts of passion on both sides of the topic. We have seen people listening to others and even changing their stance. We have seen people being ridiculously disrespectful, and people being respectful of others' beliefs. One thing is for sure. Once this decision is made, I encourage you all to continue on this journey of sharing your time, energy, and passion for other causes. This community, the school, and the students could use more people that care. In making my decision, it really comes down to some pretty basic teachings that I learned in my early years of school. They are the same relational skills I teach my kids. If you are doing something that hurts or offends someone else, discuss it and learn from it. If it is a validated reason, and you can understand their stance, change your behavior. The only way to do better is to know better, and now we know. We must do better, and we must move on. We have heard that we are not honoring the majority of, the very people that the nickname and mascot stands for. This issue has used up valuable resources that our district doesn't have in excess of, including time and money. A delay is not a solution. A delay is only going to use more of those resources. Waiting for the legislature to strong-arm us only takes our control away. Putting it back to the voters in the form of a referendum feels cowardly, and likely won't change our individual voting decision. We, as a board, have a job to do. The job is to make a decision tonight and put this to rest. We have a budget to work on and other issues to tackle. Issues and decisions that directly impact our students. After all, isn't that why we are here in the first place?
My name is Haley Fleming, and I'm gonna run through my notes here. We all have our own beliefs in this matter, everybody on the board and everybody here in the audience. Tradition versus a change and new age. My recommendation to everybody here, whether you're on the board or in the audience, is to be objective and to think objectively. To me, this means not being influenced by personal opinions, biases, or beliefs, and to think of it more like serving on a jury. You may walk into a jury and go in there with a preconceived notion of bias, and that's not how that's to be conducted. I see and understand both sides of the argument here. Both sides have their own beliefs, which I've heard. Both sides are not really objective and are highly emotional. To discuss intent versus perception, I believe thoroughly that no one's intent is to be offensive to anybody. However, arguably, it's hard to argue with someone about how they perceive something. The issue, one way or another, no matter which decision the board chooses to make here, I think will continue to resurface. It costs a lot of money. More importantly, resources, consumption of time, of board members and school staff that have to spend a lot of time on this and deal with issues that, particularly in this time of year, are of more importance. I'll end with, I feel confident that this board, no matter the outcome, will remain professional, cohesive, and put our kids first.
I'm Gar French, and I'm from Smithfield. I was on the board for thirteen years back when my kids were going through the school. And when I retired, I decided to come back onto the board. I've been on for about three years. One of the things I've been interested in is education. And that includes this particular issue. There's been some talk about the ignorance of certain people and how they've acted towards the Indian name. And one of my concerns is we do some work now in the school system with Native American issues and teaching them. I don't think we do enough. And I'm afraid that if we get rid of the mascot, we won't be doing anything, and the ignorance will remain. My other issue that I wanted to just mention is that I'm really disappointed that the Department of Education came out in favor of this issue, because policy issues should be done at the local level. And I really think that this is setting a bad example in our president for future issues. Thank you.
I'm Peggy Lovejoy. I represent Scotty Hegan. I've been on the board for eight years. I also taught in MSAD-54 since 1977, and I've been involved continually in the education of children since that time, if you count the board, which I do. I wondered a lot about what I would say tonight. I believe that this is a very difficult issue, and I believe there are good people on both sides of this issue. But I do remember when Brent read the letter, and I think it was in November of 2014, it was from Barry Dana, and asking us to change the name. My first reaction was, if it offends somebody, then we should change it. That seemed very simple to me, and it was soon very clear to me that that was not simple at all for many people. But for me, it is that simple. The most compelling reason for change is that we've been asked by the people the name was supposed to honor, to change it. As teachers and workers with children, we try to model to those children that they should honor the feelings of other people. How can we ignore the tribal council of the Maine tribes and still ask children to honor others? I think it is important to note that we live in such a different world than in 1924 when this name began. What was okay in 1924 is not okay now. We all know that. Seventy percent of this board would not have been able to vote in 1924. That's the women that are on this board. And of course, Native Americans would not have been able to do that either. I think discrimination and racism are very insidious issues. I think that they're very hard to identify. I think that we have all heard the information as, you know, calling people names, saying terrible things about people, and I wish we could have eliminated that, because I think we're all speaking from our hearts, and that we all have opinions, and I think that most of the people in this room are very good people. But after I said that I taught here for such a long time, this education of the children in this district is very important to me. As school board members, it is our job to serve as advocates for children. That comes from the Maine School Board Manual, School Board Association Manual. I worry about the child who suffers from actions and words of others and doesn't say anything about it. The atmosphere of having an Indian nickname lends itself to that. I believe all children are best served by eliminating the Indian name, and thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Bunker, and I'm from Mercer. First, I want to acknowledge that, like all of you, I have a very strong opinion about whether our name is offensive or honorable. However, I don't believe my opinion of our name is relevant, and I won't seek to change anyone's opinions about the name tonight. However, it is important for me to say to Ambassador Dana, and the Wabanaki representatives, and to all the young Indigenous people who reached out to share their concern and to describe their fears and the harms they experience, that I have heard you, that I am sorry, that I hope that through improving our curriculum, specifically regarding our local tribes and educating ourselves, that we can work together to find better ways to honor our shared history in this area and to not do further harm. Now, to the board, I do believe we can all agree on one basic thing about our name, that it is divisive. It is not newly divisive. It has been for many, many decades. It certainly was when I was a student here in high school twenty-five years ago. As a board, we talk a lot about how student success is impacted by the culture of and the connection to our school. I don't believe that having a divisive name benefits our school or our community. There's ample evidence of that, just looking around this room. It's tearing us apart. I know that some of you would like to wait to see what happens with the bill in the legislature. Maybe it won't pass. However, my understanding of history is that people who believe their civil rights are being violated don't have a reputation of quietly slinking away in the face of adversity. I firmly believe that regardless of the bill, this issue only gets bigger and more damaging to our community and school from here on out, if we don't vote to change. I don't conclude this out of fear of those things, but from the very practical sense that we are not a billion-dollar sports franchise able to fight a First Amendment rights versus civil rights battle. Any willingness on our part to do so would only be at the expense of our students' limited resources. When we are elected, our only responsibility then becomes the welfare of each and every one of our students and the education we provide them. I understand that many of you find honor in having a last stand, and I respect that. I admire tenacity. However, I'd like to point out that you have already achieved that last stand. We will now always be known as the last school in Maine to have kept our name and imagery. But from here on out, prolonging a decision does not gain anything for our community. Our students gain nothing from this continued division. I think we should vote together unanimously to do the hard thing but the right thing, and start the process of respectfully moving on together. I acknowledge that for many of you, that would be a vote against your strong personal belief. But it would also be a vote that shows our students that their well-being, their education, and their futures matter more to us as a board than our nostalgic traditions. Our towns have been fractured by a divisive name. We have a great deal of healing to do. I believe one way to begin that healing is to invite members of the community, both Native and non-Native, to join current students and teachers and local historians in forming a Scotty Hegan Area Mascot Commission to help our school develop a new identity that honors and represents and unifies us through the one thing that has unified us all along, our Scotty Hegan pride.
I've been on the school board for years. Oh, Amy Rose, from Scotty Hegan. I sat in the audience during the last discussion of this issue. I also travel every season with the speech team throughout this state. And I want to tell you that even though it's our issue in our town and our district, that there is in the world of education beyond Scotty Hegan and Norwich Walk and Mercer and Caden and Corvina and Smithfield, the majority of the educators talk about, "Why can't your board change?" So if they're talking to me as a judge, I know the kids are talking in the cafeteria, and I know the kids hear it as they are preparing to speak to judges from all over the state. That makes me sad, because it does affect the kids, how they think about themselves. Of course, the speech team, the drama team, the band, the science team, the robotics team, they're all Scotty Hegan High School. They don't have a mascot at all. So at the forum, when we asked the public to speak, thirty-seven people spoke from our district. They came forward. Of those, twenty-nine spoke to retire our current mascot. And I would think that we need to honor them, and we need to honor our children.
My name is Linda Quinn. I've been on the board for four years. I was a selectman in Scotty Hegan for twenty-one. I was a county commissioner for eight. I was born here. My children were all born here. We all educated in SAD-54. Well, except when I was here, it was just Scotty Hegan schools. That's how old I am. I'm gonna say it again, and I want you people on the board to listen to me. It is not a mascot. It's an icon. It's an icon that represents community, pride, courage, history, and tenacity. And that's just what I came up with on the top of my head while I was thinking here today. We have to educate children. We agree that we need to educate children in a lot of ways. We need to do something about the bullying that goes on in this district. We need to deal with the children who are grossly overweight and who get picked on all the time here, the skinny children who are called to names as well, the homeless, the transgender, the homosexual. The list goes on. So if we're gonna start educating people in this district, let's start at the top and move it all the way down. I married a man, a local man, who has Native American blood in his veins, and passed that on to my children. And I was on the committee in 1990 to talk about the change. We talked with our own Native American people who live here, who send their kids to school here, who have a stake in this community. And all they said is, "Don't make fun. Just don't make fun of us." They had no problems with the word "Indian", and had obviously no problems with the icon that we have up there now, which is a picture of a native fishing on the riverbank, which is what Scotty Hegan is named for. It's what our pride is. And that was an easy fix in 1990, because we did. We obliterated all those cartoons, if you all remember. Oh, good lord, maybe some of you were too young to remember. The Running Indians and the little cartoon people, they all got erased. And we understood what their issue was. We understood their issue. I don't understand the issue that's coming from away. You will not eliminate history. You can try, but you won't. And a lot of us were Scotty Hegan Indians, and we will die, Scotty Hegan Indians. And let me just say one more time, it's not a mascot. That mascot went away in 1919.
It's not a mascot. My name is Harold Bigelow, and I've been very vocal on this. I was vocal before I got on the board, and I didn't ask to be on the board. They nominated me on Facebook or something else. So anyway, here I am, and it's not a mascot. A mascot is a goat on a rope. And this is definitely... My son, my kids, they all played sports. We sat on the bleachers. We cheered them on, "Go Indians." Everything was... We were cooking hot dogs, and you ask anybody out there on the field and everything, and somebody that was out there carrying the Indian logo, we kept pride. And this is a local thing, and people from away come in here, stir it up. They think there's racism and everything. They never mentioned that. Everybody has... They never mentioned... I've never seen anybody mention the entitlement they get to make up, to make up for the wrongdoing in the past and everything. My son's got friends that are free tuition. My son's paying through the nose, and I am too, for my children. And they got free tuition, but they stand out there, and they'll be on the bus and come right up and protest. I don't appreciate that. Mr. Smith over there had come up with a good idea. I think that we've wasted enough of our board time to help everything, on everything but our $1.25 million increase that doesn't seem to be getting out there very well. And we got so many other things, the bullying that my girl here keeps bringing up. And everybody else has got issues here. We've got to get back to what... I think Mr. Smith ought to bring this to the town, and let the town, just the voters in the town, decide this. I think we've already voted once. You know how we stand, and it'll be brought up again, but they won't protest us. They won't protest the town like they did us. They won't bully us. They'll have to single you guys out. I got a feeling that's the way we ought to go. And let us get back to the business that we're supposed to be up here for. And give... That's enough. Give up some more.
Hi, Kristy Johnson, representing Smithfield, and I've been on the board, as most of you know, for about five months. So very new to all of this, and came into this whole situation due to this. Not due to this issue, but because I've been in education, for public education as a teacher, and now I'm in higher education for about nineteen years. and now I'm in higher education for about 19 years. I've lived in 11 different states, so I've seen a lot of these different types of bullying and things that are going on. And Maine definitely is being part of that change, and I definitely feel that we need to make a change for the kids in this district. This is what we are here representing, and that is what we need to do. Thank you.
So we've heard from the board, and so now... I'm sorry, I'm fighting the cold. Sometimes my voice just goes away. Now we are going to return to regular order and discuss any potential action on the Native American name. Okay, I'm gonna stop by saying I'm looking for a motion on for Sarah.
I move that we respectfully retire the Indian name and imagery from MSAD 54.
Do I hear a second? Seconded by Derek. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion on this motion?
Yes, sir.
Can we be clear on her motion that she said here at Skowhegan, it's a school district, it includes the middle school and high school where the name is mostly used? So can we reword that to state SAD 54 as opposed to Skowhegan Area High School?
She can amend that. Sarah, would you agree to amend that?
I'd like to amend that.
Was this seconded, Derek? Would you agree with that amendment?
Should there be any language in there as far as the timeline is concerned? You know, we're using that building. As far as making any change?
So the easiest way to do this is to first vote on the amendment to SAD 54. So we have a second for that. We have to vote on the amendment first, and then we can go back to the amendment.
So be clear to the board, we are now voting on the amendment to include, correct me if I'm wrong, MSAD 54.
It's all schools.
It's all schools. It'll include the entire district. That's what we're voting on. All those in favor?
Just the amendment.
We're voting on just the amendment votes. For those of you that don't know, the votes are weighted, so they're making sure they get the right names and weights. All those opposed. It's not the vote. It's just the amendment.
I would just ask for clarification. Sarah, could you restate your motion with the amendment?
I move that we respectfully retire the Indian name, imagery, and mascotry from MSAD 54.
Is there any more discussion on that? Go on. The motion has already been seconded. It was just asked for clarification. Is there any discussion on that? On this motion to remove the name from SAD 54? Okay, so now we'll take a vote. All those in favor? We're doing a roll call? They want to do a roll call vote? Yes.
Keep your hands up so we can call them.
Oh, I see. I understand. Late. Dixie Brin?
I think I want to be clear that yes or no, what is... Yes, we're taking the name away, is that correct? No, means you want to leave it as it is. Icy Brin? Yes.
Mary Ellen Charles? Yes. Kathy Wilder? Yes.
Mark Bedard? No.
No, it's just as much as they can. Teresa?
Teresa Howard? Yes.
Derek Ellis?
Yes.
Jeanne Conley? Yes.
Brady Morgan?
Yes.
Desiree Libby?
Yes.
Peggy Lovejoy?
Yes.
Sarah Bunker?
Yes.
Amy Rouse?
Yes.
Kristy Johnson?
Yes.
Now the nos.
No.
Mark Bedard? No.
Jeanne Franklin? No.
Jen Corrier? No.
Karen Smith?
No.
Todd Smith? No.
Gar French? No.
Linda Quinn? No.
Harold Bigelow? No.
When the vote is tallied, I'm gonna ask that everybody remain respectful and calm. We need a quiet vote. I know it's an emotional issue, and everybody's excited to hear what it is, but we need to be quiet. I'm gonna again ask that everybody remain calm, respectful. The vote was 14 to 9, with 14 to change and 9 to keep. Those weighted votes are to change 558 to 441. It is a vote. I'm looking for a motion on the floor to adjourn. Peggy and Linda Quinn, thank you so much. We need a vote to adjourn, I'm told. All those in favor of adjourn?